Good morning, everybody, and welcome. This is the regular business meeting of the Mason County Commission for December third, two thousand and twenty-four. Jeff Carey, would you please do us the honor of reading this in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
Now I'm here.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Item number four is correspondence. Do you have any correspondence to come before the committee?
I do. Applications were received from the following. Elizabeth Seckler and Christopher Thomas Gaynor for the Historic Preservation Commission, and Terry King for the Mason County Clean Water District. Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following. Liquor license approval for Haru Sushi Teriyaki and WAP. Cannabis license for Sasha's Cannabis. And notice to licensees on firearms. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sent in the following. Plan and schedule to address the Board of Consultants Meeting Number One. Recommendations for the Cushman Project and result of the two thousand and twenty-four environmental inspections of the Winucci and Cushman Hydroelectric Projects. Two thousand and twenty-five budgets, levy certifications, and/or resolutions were received from the following. Port of Allen, Mason County Fire District Number Six. South Mason Fire District Number Four. Port of Hootsport, Port of Duwato. Hootsport Fire and AMS Fire District Number Eighteen. Mason County Fire District Number Seventeen. Mason County Cemetery District Number One. Timberland Regional Library. Shelton School District. Mason County Fire District Twelve. Mason County Fire District Thirteen. And Port of Breakfield. And Xfinity sent a notice of price changes.
Thank you. Next up, I have item number four point two. Planning Advisory PAC Vacancy News Release.
Wow. Someone didn't read their calendar this morning.
Mark, if you have that.
I do.
Good thing it wasn't you, Kelly.
I think it was Marissa. Just kidding. Sorry, she hates that.
So we have a Planning Advisory Commission vacancy. Mason County is seeking one motivated and engaged individual to serve as a volunteer member of the Planning Advisory Commission. The Commission plays a crucial role over the next couple of years in updating the county's comprehensive plan, which outlines the vision and goals for the county's future growth and development. There's one open seat represented as an at-large position, meaning anywhere in the county. The Planning Advisory Commission is the seven-member citizen board appointed to advise the Board of County Commissioners on policies related to amendments to the comprehensive plan, shoreline master program, resource ordinance, and other development regulations, including making recommendations on rezone applications. The Commission typically meets at least once per month on the third Monday at six P. M. with special meetings scheduled as necessary. Appointed commissioners normally serve a four-year term. The Commissioner District at-large position will be filling a vacancy set to expire in January of two thousand and twenty-five. And therefore, we are setting the new expiration to January of two thousand and twenty-nine. Applications to serve on the board are being accepted until the position is filled and should be submitted to the Mason County Commissioners at four eleven North Fifth Street, Shelton, nine eight five eight four. Application forms may be obtained from the Commissioner's Office, three six oh four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four one nine, or visit our website at www.masoncountywa.gov.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have a very special event recognition of somebody special. Luca, could you please come forward and discuss the certificate of appreciation for David Daly?
Yep, so.
Tell us who you are first, what department?
Absolutely, yes. My name's Luke Scusi. I'm a staff member for the Historic Preservation Commission and within the planning department. And last week, we briefed the commissioners on awarding David Daly, who was, David Daly, sorry, who was a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for four years with a certificate of service. The reason being, Dave was basically forced out of his position on the commission due to an accident. And so throughout, you know, mid-pandemic, post-pandemic work, getting our CLAC program application up and running, the various grant reviews that were done throughout the year. Dave was a really, really outstanding member on the commission, and we felt he needed to be recognized. So we were asking that the Mason County Board of Commissioners award him with a certificate of service.
So Dave has been injured, and so he's not here today. So Commissioner Schutie, if you wouldn't mind going down and presenting to Luca.
The certificate and a green star for David, and wish him all the best in his recovery.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Greatly appreciated on behalf of the commission.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, any further correspondence or organizational business to come before the commission?
There is not.
Okay. Next up, we have our open forum for citizens' input. This is your opportunity to speak to the commission and the public on an item that's not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we ask that you hold off and you wait until it comes up. You can have it taken off for a separate vote. You'll be given an opportunity to testify at that time. But if it's on the agenda, we just ask that you hold off and wait till then. But not on the agenda, you'll be invited now to speak up to three minutes. Fifteen minutes total for everybody, so please be brief if you don't mind. We'll start with those that are in the room, and then we'll go to Zoom. If you do want to speak, we will ask you to raise your hand. I'll call on you. We'll ask you to go to the podium, and please let us know who you are and perhaps where you're from. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the commission and the public on any item that's not on the agenda? Please raise your hand now in the room. Anybody in the room? Hearing none? Is there anybody in Zoom who would like to speak to the commission on any item that is not on the agenda? If so, please raise your hand. If you don't know how, unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to the commission on anything not on the agenda? If so, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. If somebody else is signing in, we'll give them one second here. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak to the commission on any item that is not on the agenda? If you're on Zoom, unmute yourself now, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none? We will move forward. Item number six, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. It has been moved to second for the adoption of the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes from August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and November nineteenth, regular minutes, and October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four briefing minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved to second for the approval of the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and November nineteenth, regular meeting minutes, and October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four briefing minutes in their entirety. Any comments, Pauls? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is the approval of the action agenda. The action agenda will be read in its entirety to everybody, at which time, after we read it into its entirety, you'll be given an opportunity to ask a question, to decide whether you want something taken off for a separate vote. If you do want to testify, you will just go ahead and ask that it be taken off for a separate vote, and that's when you will be given an opportunity to testify. But other than that, after we read it into the record, the rest of them will be passed with one motion from the commission. With that being said, commissioners, I will read one through six, one through seven. Commissioner Schutie, would you read eight point eight through eight point one four? Commissioner Trask, eight point one five through eight point two one. Item number eight point one, approval warrants and treasures, electronic remittance, claims, clearing fund, warrants number eight one zero eight eight six one through eight one zero eight nine five eight. The amount, one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars, ninety-eight cents. Direct. Direct deposit fund, warrants number one 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 five five one through one 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 nine six five. The amount, nine hundred, fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars, forty-two cents. Salary clearing fund, warrants number seven zero zero eight five two five through seven zero zero eight five five one. The amount, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars, fifty-four cents. Item number eight point two, approval of the Lewis County Prisoner Housing Contract Amendment, increasing the daily housing rate from ninety-four dollars and twenty-seven cents a day to a hundred and three dollars, sixty-nine cents a day, and extending the expiration date to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Item number eight point three, approval to renew the LexisNexis contract for seven hundred and forty-four dollars a month for the activation date from December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars a month for January first, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, one thousand and forty-nine dollars per month for January first, two thousand and twenty-six through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, and one thousand and one hundred and one dollars a month for January first, two thousand and twenty-seven through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. Item number eight point four, approval to reappoint Bob Wilkinson to the Planning Advisory Commission, the PAC, for a term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine. Item number eight point five, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five at nine fifteen A. M. to consider changes on the countywide planning policies. Item number eight point six, approval for the Planning Health and Human Services Director to move forward with United Week Care Mental Health Technology Pilot Program and seek two hundred thousand dollars in grant funding. Item number eight point seven, approval for the Public Health and Human Services Director to sign Pierce County Planning and Public Works Subrecipient Agreement for Mason County and South Sound Shellfish Recovery.
Mr. Chair, item eight point eight, approval for Public Works to purchase a pickup broom attachment off the NJPA Joint Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number Zero Three Two One One Dash J. B. C. with paint machinery for thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and seven cents. Item eight point nine, approval to reappoint Blair Sherman to the Transportation Improvement Program, Citizens Advisory Panel to represent Commissioner District Three, Shelton, UGA, or city, for a three-year term expiring December third, two thousand and twenty-seven. Item eight point ten, approval for the county administrator to sign the lease agreement extension with Crossroads Housing to provide office space to Veterans Service Officers from January first, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars per month payable from the Veterans Assistance Fund, one ninety. Item eight point eleven, approval of the resolution amending the nonrepresented salary range alignment per the recommendations of Cabodao Associates and Mason County Human Resources. Item eight point twelve, approval of the American Rescue Plan Act Contract Amendment with the Youth Connection to amend the scope of work to include renovation costs to the first and second floors of the Youth Connection Building. Item eight point three, approval to reappoint Terry King to the Mason County Clean Water District Advisory Committee for a term expiring October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Item eight point fourteen, approval of the dispute resolution center contract in the amount of forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for lead and sub-grantees of the Consolidated Homeless Grant for a term of December first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Item eight point fifteen, approval to accept and certify the addition of the Camp Robins World property on the Mason County Historic Register. Item eight point sixteen, approval of the amended heritage grant contract for the Skokomish Grange Number Three Seven Nine in the amount of five thousand dollars to amend the scope of work to include repair of ceiling tiles. Item eight point seventeen, approval of the State Homeland Security Program Fiscal Year Twenty-Four Grant Contract E. Twenty-five dash two zero nine for nineteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars from Washington State Military Department and U. S. Department of Homeland Security for the performance period of September first, two thousand and twenty-four through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Item eight point eighteen, approval to amend Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-four Dash Zero Two Seven for the Salary Commission to establish staggered terms. Item eight point nineteen, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Shelton to allow District Court to hold court calendars at five twenty-five West Coda Street, Shelton during the construction of the District Court Facility Building Ten. Item eight point twenty, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four at nine fifteen A. M. to consider sale of real property located at six Public Works Drive, Shelton, Washington, parcel number four two zero zero two dash one three dash nine zero zero six zero for five hundred thousand, and sale of real property located at eight Public Works Drive, Shelton, Washington, parcel number four two zero zero two dash one three dash nine zero zero eight zero for six hundred and fifty thousand to David C. Bailey and/or assigneds. Item eight point twenty-one, approval to move American Rescue Plan Act funds for the retainage fee of nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars, twenty-one cents back into the downtown fiber project from government operations for final payment.
Now that all the items have been read into the public, this is your opportunity to ask a question that may help you to decide whether they have it taken off for a separate vote. Is there a question that anybody has that would help them to decide whether to take something off for a separate vote? Hearing none? Is there anybody in Zoom that has a question regarding what was all read here to help them decide whether they want something taken off for a separate vote? If so, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Okay, is there any item that anybody would like taken off for a separate vote? Commissioner?
Not me.
Commissioners?
Now I do have one question.
Oh.
Item eight point two zero, eight point twenty. Are we ready to go on that one? Did we hear back from Bailey?
We're cleaning up some minor details in the offer, but I think that we should be ready. And so if we have this on the agenda, then if we come to a final agreement on those minor details, then we can actually go ahead and move forward with the sale.
Thank you.
All right, is there any item that the audience would like taken off for a separate vote? If so, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Is there any item that the audience in Zoom would like taken off for a separate vote? If so, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. I'll ask a second time. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like an item taken off for a separate vote so they can either testify or see how the commissioners vote individually? If so, raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of today's action agenda items eight point one through eight point two one as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved to second for the approval of the action agenda in its entirety, eight point one through eight point two one. Any discussion, comments?
Not me.
No.
I just want to thank everybody that reapplies and applies for our citizens' committees. Everything is based upon that, as you well know. It is the foundation of everything we do, so thank you for standing up and doing it again. I've partied it the first time, so it makes a difference, although you've been on more than I can count. With that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, next up, we have other business, department heads and elected officials. Are there any department heads or elected officials who would like to speak at this time? In the room first. If so, please raise your hand, I'll call on you. Are you going to speak?
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I'm just here under the employees group to tell you what we have going on for the next twenty days or so. So twelve six, we're lighting the Christmas tree out at the courthouse lawn at five thirty. Come by, have some cocoa, and then we're going to light the Christmas tree. Oh, it should be a button. Got new lights on it, more lights than last year. We have a hygiene drive coming on and food drive that's happening twelve ninth through the twentieth, and the donations are all going to the schools for their youth and their needs. We got the envelope getting passed around. That money this year is going to benefit the kitten rescue, adopt a pet, and the Humane Society. And we got our annual bake sale. And that money this year is going to the Pathways House. They're the people. I want to say kids, but they're not kids. They come around and wash our windows and do some shredding and do some vacuuming and get prepared for life. That's all I have.
When is the bake sale?
The bake sale. Twelve nineteen.
Is Diane?
You should probably write that down.
Is Diane bringing her checkbook?
I'm sure she is.
Okay.
Kelly, we appreciate you more than you'll ever know. You've done so much, and all of your group do. You've been the leader of that for so many years. Thank you. Okay, is there any other elected officials or department heads in this room who would like to speak to the commission or the public? Tell us anything going on. Okay, is there anybody on Zoom, department head or elected official who would like to speak? Give us an update on anything they're doing. If so, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you, or of course, raise your hand. Seeing none? We will move forward. We have the time. We are now moving into item number ten, which is our public hearing. I'm going to open a public hearing to consider adopting the capital improvement program two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and thirty, Appendix A of the Capital Facilities Element. Staff, Marissa Watson.
Good morning, commissioners. Marissa Watson with the Community Development Department. As you mentioned, this is the six-year financing plan for our capital facilities element for the period of two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and thirty. During this cycle of the capital improvement program review, the Planning Advisory Commission decided to form a subcommittee. This subcommittee was formed in order to perform a more thorough review of the capital improvement program, meet with county staff in a less formal setting for review and education regarding capital project choices and financing, and finally to form topics for the inclusion in a recommendation letter to the B. O. C. C. Planning staff has worked with Public Works, Parks and Trails, Facilities Finance, and other support services staff to update and bring forth the draft C. I. P. prior to the B. O. C. C. decision on the preliminary budget. And then the C. I. P. Subcommittee drafted a recommendation letter that was approved by the PAC at their September sixteenth meeting, and the PAC is recommending approval of the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty C. I. P. as-is, but makes a list of recommendations for future capital project planning and financing and communication of that information within the future C. I. P. documents. Staff did not receive any comment from state agencies or tribes during the CIP process, and neither did they receive any comment from the public as well. This six-year planning period estimates, as of our September sixteenth PAC meeting, estimates projects at forty-one million, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in capital project costs. And as currently planned, the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty capital improvement program would result in a fund balance of seventeen million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. That would be reduced to five million, one hundred and nine thousand dollars of grants, loans, and funding from adjacent jurisdictions and tribe funding was not secured. I do have a couple of our C. I. P. Subcommittee members here today for questions. I don't know if they were planning on speaking or not, but I do have them here as well. But PAC and staff is recommending approval of the two thousand, the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty C. I. P. for Mason County.
So first up, what we do is we want to ask if anybody has any questions regarding the presentation. If you want to testify, stuff you'll be given that opportunity afterwards, but is there anybody, commissioners, do you have any question for staff?
Not for me.
No.
Is there anybody in the audience has a question for staff regarding the presentation? If so, raise your hand, I'll call on you. Is there anybody in Zoom that has questions for staff regarding the presentation? If you want to testify, you'll be given an opportunity afterwards, but right now, we're just asking for questions from staff regarding the presentation. If so, unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Raise your hand, unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you if you'd like to ask questions of staff regarding the presentation. Hearing none? I will close presentation and move to public testimony. Is there any public who would like to testify at this time? If so, we'll start in the room. Please raise your hand, and I will call on you.
Sure.
I've known it a long time.
We like, I pledge.
I did. I almost didn't take my eyes on anybody else because I knew eventually you would. And I mean that with all respect.
No, no problem. Jeff Carey, Vice Chair of the Planning Advisory Committee. As you saw, we presented also a letter to the Board of County Commissioners. I won't go into the details of it, but we've, you know, asked both this year's, you know, Board of Commissioners, as well as next year's Board of Commissioners, use this letter as kind of a guideline as to where the direction we see that the PAC needs to go as far, and also the county needs to go with regards to, you know, capital facilities. We also, it wasn't totally discussed, but where this is driving is we'd like to see that the, at least the directors in the various departments or deputy directors, at least get acquainted with Department of Commerce's book on capital facilities planning with regards to GMA, capital facilities planning in general, because there's a number of steps. And while we are a smaller county, and not all those steps need to be necessarily done, there's a number of steps, key points that I think would greatly help facilitating our job as far as the PAC goes in trying to determine priorities and work with the staff to work with those priorities. So it seems like there's a gap between what we do and what we read, and this is the first attempt to try to get in that direction, and we'll continue to strive to, you know, the PAC will continue to strive to move in this direction. As you saw, also, it was unanimous with all board members, as well as all the subcommittee members. Other than that, any questions from the board on the letter or anything part of it?
Thank you, Jeff.
None? Surely, there must be some.
Two of us have served on it, so we're actually supportive of.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in the room who would like to testify? If so, raise your hand, and I will call on you. Seeing none? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to testify? This is your opportunity to testify. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Does anybody on Zoom? Now is your time if you would like to testify. Raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Seeing none? I will close public testimony, and I will move to commission deliberations and/or motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve and adopt the six-year financing portion of the Capital Facilities Plan as known as Appendix A, Capital Improvement Program, two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and thirty.
Second.
It has been moved to second for the approval and adoption of the six-year financing portion of the Capital Facilities Plan, also known as Appendix A, Capital Improvement Program, two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and thirty. Any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a word of thanks to the Planning Commission members who are here today. It's heavy work. It's a lot to kind of wade through, especially when you're doing this in the context of our comprehensive plan update and some of those other things that you have, short-term rentals. There's a kind of a heavy agenda right now for Planning Commission, so appreciate the effort on this. And when I was on the Planning Commission, I was fortunate to never serve on a subcommittee, so grateful for you taking that extra bit of effort on that as well. And then, of course, thanks to Marissa for shepherding this through and putting together a blueprint for the county to use into the future to figure out how we start to tackle the most critical infrastructure needs in the community, both from an economic development perspective, but also health and welfare and quality of life issues as it relates to our parks, facilities, and so on and so forth. So just a word of thanks, appreciate it, and look forward to the county executing on this plan over the next five years.
Yep. So I want to thank Bob, Brad, Jeff, Mike, Terry, William, and Randy for all being members of our PAC team. I think that they take time and dedication, and I truly appreciate you guys bringing forth the recommendation and for all your hard work and hours. I know, I don't know how many hours, but I know it was a ton. And so I really want to appreciate or show my appreciation to you guys, the entire PAC team, and the subcommittee because you put in extra hours. And also, Marissa, thank you so much for all your hard work. I know it takes time. It's not an eight-to-five job, and so I appreciate that a lot.
And again, I'll do the same thing first. I'll start with Marissa. Everything you touch turns to gold. You do very well. We're very, very appreciative of you. Really do. For all those that are serving on it, I served on it as well. I was the chair for years, and I got to tell you, I just sat here and realized, though, it got harder on him because I became commissioner during that process, and we found that the shoreline master plan had grown to this big, and so we actually sent it back to rip out anything that wasn't required by law. And guess who was serving at that time? And they had to do sometimes several meetings every week. It was, and it went for years. It was a tough one. I guess I owe you an apology. I hadn't thought about it until just now. But, you know, it is a lot of work, and a lot of hard work goes on, but something that did happen a little more this time, you got a lot more participation from the departments than in the past, so you're moving in the right direction. There was a time where the Sheriff's Department, wouldn't you show up? We'd ask for it, and we'd demand it, and they'd demand it when I was on the committee. They wouldn't even send anything to the Planning Commission. So it's come a long ways, and you guys have done a lot of hard work, and very much appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. With that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries. This hearing is closed. We will move on to the second hearing. It carries, that this hearing is closed, we will move on to the second hearing. Item number ten point two, I'm gonna open the hearing to consider the sale of parcel number three two zero zero five dash three one dash six zero zero seven zero in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Thaddeus and Brenda Bamford. Staff Mark Neri.
Thank you, Mark Neri, Mason County Administrator. Um, so this is a, this is a sale of a parcel, uh three two zero zero five dash thirty one dash six zero zero seven zero. Um, back in July of twenty twenty four, uh the Commissioners passed Resolution Number twenty twenty four dash oh forty one, declaring this parcel surplus. And then on August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, we had a public hearing um to finalize that declaration of surplus. We put this parcel on the market and received bids for it, um I believe we only received one bid. The assessed value in twenty twenty four was five thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars. And the offer that we received from Thaducius and Brenda Bamford uh was ten thousand dollars. So our requested action is to approve, uh approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December third. To consider the sale of this in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
And since this is December third, we're here doing that now. So with that being said.
There is a piece to this, that uh there there, so this parcel is a, it's off Johns Prairie Road, there's a kind of a corner. It's a, Public Works had had acquired this years ago to do some alignment for Johns Prairie. Um, the the road was eventually lined, I believe, in a different manner. And so a portion of this Public Works right-of-way still exists on the parcel that's being purchased. So citizens and the commission, uh we'll see Public Works coming back to vacate their easement on that parcel. Uh, because there's no longer a need for uh the road to be to moved in that direction, so. Uh, this is the sale of the actual property, you will see in the coming months. Um, the process for vacating the easement that Public Works has on it. So kind of a complicated parcel for such a little piece of property, but.
So now that the staff has read this, uh and discussed it, is there any questions from uh the audience here to staff regarding this presentation? If you want to testify, you'll be given an opportunity afterwards, but right now, is there any questions to staff regarding this presentation? Hearing none, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to ask a question of staff regarding their presentation? This is not an opportunity to testify, this is the opportunity to ask a question. Uh, if so, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Anybody in Zoom who would like to ask a question of staff regarding presentation, raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none, we will close presentation, go into a uh testimony, public testimony, is anybody in the public who would like to testify at this time? If so, this is your opportunity, raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Is there anybody in Zoom who would like to testify on this in this hearing on this issue? If so, raise your hand, say or uh unmute yourself, say your name, and I'll call on you. For a second time, anybody in Zoom land that would like to testify, this is your opportunity, raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none, I will close public testimony and move to commission deliberations and or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the sale of parcel number three two zero zero five dash three one dash six zero zero seven zero in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Thaddeus and Brenda Bamford.
I'll second.
It has been moved to second for the approval uh uh of the sale of parcel number three two zero zero five dash three one dash six zero zero seven zero in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Thaddeus and Brenda Bamford, any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is closed, next up. Item number ten point three, we're gonna open a hearing to consider certifying the county assessors uh the amount of taxes levied for the county purposes and the amount of taxes levied for current expense and road for twenty twenty five and increase to the current expense and road property tax levies for twenty twenty five, uh they may be considered Jennifer Barney.
Good morning, Jennifer Byerly, Support Services. And this is a uh continuation of the public hearing from November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. To certify to the county assessor the amount of taxes levied for county purposes and the amount of taxes levied for collection in twenty twenty five. The current expense and road property tax levy resolutions were approved by the Board of County Commissioners at the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four public hearing. The um assessor's office has received and has received levy requests and calculated them for all of the taxing districts. So um we are ready to um move to adopt the resolution certifying to the county assessor the property tax levies for collection in twenty twenty five. So that's the first um recommended action. Uh, the second recommended action is move to adopt the resolution certifying diverted county road funds to the general fund for the twenty twenty five property tax collection year. And that's a new resolution that will be bringing forward every year um as long as we're doing road diversion. So any questions or comments?
So you also have a third.
Um, the third um motion is only if the levy requests were not received and calculated by the assessor's office. So we're not recommending to move the public hearing to December seventeenth, so that would be the option if um if that was not.
So your recommendation then is uh one and two.
Correct, yes, exactly.
All right, uh I will move to ask you if there's any questions in in the audience first for staff regarding presentation. Are there any questions in the audience regarding the presentation from staff? Hearing none, I will move to Zoom, is there anybody in Zoom who would like to ask staff a question regarding the presentation? Again, not a time to testify, but this is a time for you to ask a questions that would help you better understand the presentation that was just given. If so, raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. If you would like to testify, uh or if you'd like to ask a question of staff, right now's your opportunity, raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Then we will move to public testimony, and for the public, the reason why I do it twice on Zoom is you have no idea how many times they fumble around trying to find a way to get to that button to get it undone, uh it happens all the time, so. With that, we give a little extra grace on there. So is there anybody in the audience first who would like to testify at this time regarding uh the issue before us? I see none, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to testify regarding this hearing? If so, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you or raise your hand. This is your second opportunity, if you would like to testify, this is your chance to do that, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. I see none, so we will close public testimony and move to commission deliberation and or motions.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, go for it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the resolution certifying to the county assessor the property tax levies for collection in twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
It has been moved to second to adopt the resolution certifying the county assessor, to the county assessor the property taxes for the collection in twenty twenty five. Any comments or questions?
No, not yet.
Okay, hearing none, now all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, the motion carries. I will, I'm open for a second motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move to adopt the resolution certifying diverted county road funds to the general fund for the twenty twenty five property tax collection year.
Second.
It has, I was getting ready to do it, it has been moved and seconded. Uh, to adopt the resolution certifying diverted county road funds to the general fund for the twenty twenty five property tax collection year, any comments?
Not for me.
I do, I want to thank the assessor's office for being here and for working so well with our budget manager and with, you know. It takes time to get all the levies from all of our special districts. And so I want to thank all the work that you guys have put into this, you know, it it takes what, takes us what? Five, maybe eight minutes to get through this, but it's taken how many weeks, how many hours? So I wanted to thank you guys all for the work that you guys do and and for the efficient um way that you present it and make it easy for us to do, so, thank you.
Was it the analogy was used, uh was it yesterday regarding the uh iceberg?
No, that was, that was.
Yeah, talking about an iceberg, all you're seeing is this little tiny piece, but everything down below that goes onto this and how wide uh that net has to be cast to work with every single department person and and catch everything that everybody else doesn't catch. Thank you to all of you, and thank you to every department as we move forward with this. With that, uh all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, and that hearing is closed. Okay, next up is Board Reports and Calendars, Commissioner Shidi, if you wouldn't mind leading this off, Commissioner Truss, then myself, thank you, ladies.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just a few items over the next couple of weeks, one um was asked to pitch in and help review the proposals for the feasibility for Mason Lake, so I have a couple of those uh interviews with respondent applicants on that, um also have the Legislative Sendoff, uh Regional Economic Development and Innovation Expo, um B H A S O Governing Board Special Meeting, MaceCom Board of Directors Meeting, uh Housing and Behavior Health Advisory Board Meeting, uh have the E D C Holiday Open House, Clean Water Advisory District Meeting, um B H A S O Holiday Open House, and my bi-weekly B H A S O staff check-in uh before coming back for meetings on the seventeenth.
All right, um tomorrow morning, like Commissioner Shidi said, I'll be, I'll also be at the Legislative Sendoff breakfast. Um, looking forward to what they have to present to us and tell us what their goals are for the twenty twenty five session, should be interesting. Um, and then I have a Public Works Board meeting, the Republican Women of Mason County Christmas Luncheon. Uh, the Christmas tree lighting, there's a lot going on this weekend, so make sure that everybody gets out there and and takes a look at all the Christmas lights. I don't know if you've noticed downtown, it just looks amazing, very festive. Briefings on Monday, uh WAC virtual assembly, local emergency planning meeting. Uh, I'm gonna try to make it to the business after hours, but that's the day before I leave for vacation. And so I wouldn't count on me doing a whole lot during the vacation time, I'll try to be, no, I won't. I'm not, I'm not even gonna try to come to the briefing or the commission meeting or the WAC virtual assembly.
Commissioner, it's all on us.
So I'll be back on the twenty second, and then I'll think about working. There you go.
All right, I'm gonna hit on a couple of things that happened uh in the weeks before, we had the Gors Gors Coalition meeting, of which we were both in attendance of, no ash and anything was taken. Uh, I was uh
Likely won't for a while.
Yeah. I was a the guest speaker at the Chamber of Commerce for North Mason, and then I ended up taking on an emergency speakership role for the South Mason Chamber of Commerce. And that was funny, uh everybody has a presentation, I didn't even know I had questions, so we found out at the last minute, but it it went well, we took care of it. Um, I have Macey meeting, uh the Audit Committee meeting, and of course, we had some other things that we've done during the last couple of weeks. But coming up Rotary meeting, I have a meeting with the group uh and with our administrator regarding animal control, uh homeless housing plan meeting, uh Olympic Regional Cleaner Authority meeting, I have uh will be in the same place you are with Christmas tree lighting. I will also be uh doing a finance committee for the Olympic Regional Cleaner Authority. I have a bond committee meeting with the North Mason School District, the house, uh the wall raising for House number thirty nine for Habitat for Humanity, they're awesome. And they are just knocking them out, uh I will also be at the Legislative Steering Committee. Uh, we will be having our briefings and come back, and we'll start it all over again. With that being said, is there anything further?
Hope to see you out and about at the holiday festivities this weekend, it'll be fun.
Mm-hmm, a lot going on.
Yep. I will entertain a motion.
Move adjourned.
Okay. It has been moved to second for adjournment, hearing no objection, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody, Merry Christmas.